This conference will now be recorded.
Alright, so yesterday what we were talking, we were talking about purchase tax configuration and then we were able to post purchase tax from F I point of view both inclusive method and exclusive method. Is everybody able to practice and then bring the tax entry correctly? Yes, no?
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
Now what we will do, we will try to understand the same thing, purchase tax on purchase order invoice. We'll try to understand purchase tax on the purchase order invoice. If you look at it, we already created a purchase order where we already did G R N and while doing the invoice booking, we were getting stuck because of the purchase order invoice is not able to capture the tax information. Let us go back and then identify that purchase order, let us try to book the invoice. For this, what I will do, let me go to S A P first. I'll go to S E sixteen N. I'm going to S E sixteen N because I do not know what purchase order I created. I'll go to A K K O, purchase order header. I will pass my username created on created by, I will put my name, click on execute. There are several purchase orders created, now here I need to identify based on the purchase organization. Purchase organization is A P nine zero and this is the purchase order number. I will copy the purchase order number, I will come out, I will go to purchase order history, M E twenty three N, display purchase order. Click on this one, other purchase order. Input this purchase order number, press enter. You will see the purchase order information, you can minimize the header and then the item information. Go to the item details, here if you go to purchase order history, this purchase order history will tell you what subsequent entries posted against the P O. Currently, you can see goods receipt is accounted, invoice receipt is missing, meaning invoice is not yet booked for this purchase order. Now we have the purchase order here, make sure P O number is copied, control C. Let us try to book this purchase order now for invoice. Open one more window, go to M I R O, enter, give your company code which is A P nine zero, enter. I am going to book the invoice today, let me take current date which is thirteen zero six. Reference number must be original invoice number provided by the supplier. Let's assume this is the invoice number and straight away input this. Press enter. Now one point which we need to understand here, twenty five thousand here, you need to ensure tax code whatever it is coming here, it is coming based on the tax procedure which is assigned to the country at the time of a transaction posting. Now I am trying to post the transaction, I need to make sure since it is my company code A P nine zero in O B B G for country India, if I go to position India, it must be our tax procedure. This is not our tax procedure, change it to A P nine zero. Enter and then save it. If this is not your tax procedure, please do not practice taxation related entry, ignore the tax related interest. Make sure it is your entry, come back. What we need to do, we need to re-enter the screen, reason, tax code description is K K nine zero. Come out from this screen. Re-open the same screen, M I R O, enter. Company code is A P nine zero, invoice date, this one, amount twenty five thousand. Purchase order number, now you can see tax code is V zero, description is A P nine zero zero percent tax code. Press enter. Okay, make sure amount is twenty five thousand on the header, twenty five thousand on the item also. If you go right side, on the item level also you will find the details. Now if this is the amount, twenty five thousand on the line item, twenty five thousand on the header and the balance is zero. One point which we observed yesterday, anywhere if you want the system to calculate the tax, you need to ensure this tick box is enabled. If this is enabled, tax will be calculated, if this is not enabled, tax will not be calculated. Ensure this is enabled, calculate tax and then press enter. When you click on this, you will see the tax amount is updated as zero because tax percentage is V zero, tax rate is zero percent. Zero percent tax will bring zero tax amount, that is where you see zero. Amount entered on the header is twenty five thousand, on the line item is also twenty five thousand. Total transaction value debit credit is becoming zero. Now let us try to do this simulation part. Go to simulate. If you try to do the simulation, what we are getting, we are only getting vendor line item, other line item is not coming, in short, credit is coming, debit is not coming. Now we need to understand why debit is not coming. Close this screen, pop-up. To understand what error messages you are receiving, what is the problem in this invoice booking? Click on this messages icon. This is thread, meaning there is an error message, click on this message icon, it will give the pop-up. There are two messages here, message number one, enter business place. We need to ensure business place is created, currently business place is not created. For every plant, for every tax registration, one business place must be created, currently we did not create it. First what we will do, we will create a business place. Come out from this. Now let us go to business place creation. Go to S P R O, SAP reference I M G. Go to financial accounting, global setting and we need to create business place that you will be finding under withholding attacks. Go to extended withholding attacks and here if you go to company code, calculation, not here, posting, not here, somewhere you will get business place. Here you will find defined business places under basic settings for withholding tax. There is a business place, click on defined business place. It is asking for company code, input your company code, press enter, add a new entry, give a business place. What we will do, currently we will give business place same like our company code, I will put A P nine zero. I'll put A P nine zero business place, first make sure you are able to post the entry without getting any error. Click on save. Okay, I'll put A P nine zero business place. Country is India. Reason you pick the appropriate reason and then save this. Now business place we were able to create it. If you come back, this is where you created, do a right-click, click on show path. This is the path, let me copy this. Just copy it. Okay. And if you do a right-click, if you try to click on technical information, if you go to transaction, there is a different transaction. What I'll do, first I'll put define business place. For this, this is, this is the path and if you don't want to go through the path, simply you can put this T code. Okay, also let us come back and then do a right-click, additional information, display key, I M G activity. You don't find any T code called business place here. So you take that T code where you are able to see S underscore A L R through this T code or through this. Create a business place same like your company code and then save it. After this, come back to this.
Is this is the place from where you are operating or what is the reason?
This is basically tax registration. If you are doing, if you are receiving it from India, in India based on every state you have to do a tax registration. That is where you are supposed to do remedy taxes, right? That is how we will do it. Currently, we are creating only one at company code level. Okay, now after creating it, let us go to business place, there are two options here. Point number one, business place slash section code. Now we need business place, if you look at the error message, it is asking for business place, business place is here, meaning first box. Close this. Open the drop-down, check if you are able to find a business place, now business place is appearing. Select a business place, enter. Now to check if it is okay or not okay, again click on simulate. Don't directly click on messages because when you click on messages, it may not be updated message. Always go to message after simulation, click on simulate one more time. This is fine, close the simulation, then go to messages. Now how many messages are left?
One.
Only one error message is left, that is nothing but account determination for entry A P nine zero W R X is not possible. Open the question mark and it is telling the system did not find an account for this transaction, this means that the account determination for A P nine zero W R X is not maintained in M M customizing evaluation. This is basically referring to F I M M integration related to G R I R clearing account. For you to record invoice booking with M I R O screen, with M I R O screen, G R I R clearing account, account determination is mandatory. Now G R I R account determination is part of F I M M integration. Any F I M M integration setting is maintained in O B Y C T code. Now let us go to O B Y C T code first. I will come out from this. I will go to O B Y C T code, this is where F I M M integration will take place. Open O B Y C. System is asking you to enter W R X. Now down below you see a message, data only displayed, blocked by another user, so and so. Come out, try to reopen one more time, if it is the same message, close the user entry.
Hey, please enable the transaction codes below.
This is your O B Y C. In this O B Y C, system is telling the error message, entry for W R X is missing. Now this is the account key. These are the standard account keys given by S A P. Same thing we will be configuring in every project, we will not create a new account key. Account key is used for maintaining the G L account. If you remember yesterday's session, we created one account key for taxation for updating the tax G L account. Since taxation is our complete customized configuration, we created our own account key. But when it comes to F I M M integration, in O B Y C, all the account keys or transaction keys are provided by S A P by default. We strictly have to follow the same keys, we will not create a new one in any project. For G R I R, it is W R X, scroll down completely W series. You will find W R X here, W R X is referring to what? G R I R clearing account. Now select this, come down, maintain G R I R clearing account with account key W R X in T code O B Y C. Okay, remember these two. G R I R clearing account. To do it, we need to ensure first G R I R clearing account is created. Now this G R I R clearing, G R I R clearing is a B S liability in bracket balance in open item. Sorry, balance in, sorry, what is that field? Let me copy from the F S double zero screen and then put the exact field in it. Let us go to F S double zero first. Open a new window. F S zero zero. Now, do we have any account called G R I R currently? We do not have, did we create any account group related to G R I R, let us verify. If I scroll down, anywhere did we create G R I R clearing account, sundry data, dividend, retained earnings? We did not create, right? We have not created any account group related to G R I R, we need to make sure while creating account group for G R I R clearing account also, there should be a dedicated account group to be created under liability side. Currently, let us take under current liabilities. Did we create current liabilities? No, sundry creditor, dividend payable, outstanding expenses, retained earning, debentures. We don't have any corresponding account group which is referring to G R I R clearing account. For time being, what I will do, I will rename this two four three zero to G R I R clearing account. I'll go to O B D four. Our chart of account A P nine zero in this not debentures. What I said I'll rename it? Dividend pay. This one I am changing it to G R I R clearing. I am updating G R I R clearing, let me save this. Clear, I just updated this, the description because we did not create at the time of our account group creation. Since we missed it, I am updating existing account group just to ensure while creating the G L account, you will find appropriate data. F S double zero. If I scroll down, now do you find G R I R clearing account group? Two four three zero. Add a new entry. It should be part of two four three zero and then I will take triple zero one. Now I'll select balance sheet account. It will be two four three zero G R I R clearing. Then I will put G R I R clearing, put only one G L account, G R I R clearing. Control data, make sure for all G R I R clearing account, this must be ticked. Balance in local currency must be ticked, come here. Balance in local currency is equal to tick. Okay, this must be ticked. Scroll down, this is a open item management account. Sort key must be purchase order. Where is purchase order? Here is purchase order. Enter and you put O I M is equal to tick. O I M is referring to open item management and you put sort key is equal to zero one four. It's the zero one four, zero one four. Create a bank interest, field status group. You will find something called material account. Okay, select material account, G double zero six. F S G is equal to G double zero six. Next one, post automatically must be ticked and then save it. Next one, post automatically should be ticked. These are the parameters which you need to ensure while creating a G R I R clearing account, reason, tomorrow when you are talking to somebody especially in the interview, they might simply put a basic question, can you please tell me how you will create a G R I R clearing G L account? Or what parameters you will ensure while creating a G R I R clearing account in F S double zero? There the other person is expecting you to explain clearly this parameter. Balance in local currency must be ticked, open item management must be ticked, sort key should be purchase order number, field status group must be G double zero six, post automatically must be ticked. These parameters they expect you to explain while telling how a G R I R clearing account may be created. Now this is a simple question or not? How G R I R account is created?
Yes.
Alright, question is simple but the answer the way you are explaining will give the impact. Make sure you give right answer with accurate information. Save this. Now G R I R clearing account is saved, copy the G L account, control C. Now we need to maintain the G L account in O B Y C W R X. W R X is referring to G R I R clearing account, double click on it, enter. First point what you need to do, you need to go to rules here. Whenever you go to any account determination in O B Y C, first click on rules. Click on rule, rule you will have to tell on what basis you wanted to maintain G R I R clearing account. Now currently we need to understand when you are talking about purchase order, we have single type of a purchase order or you have three types of purchase orders. Three types, right? Material purchase order, service purchase order and then asset purchase order. We have material, asset and then service. For all these three, it is the same screen, same account determination to be maintained. Now you need to make sure you have to always consider the top priority where multiple combination is allowed. If you tick only one, considering asset accounting and then maintain the account determination when it comes to material purchase order, when it comes to service purchase order, this may not work because once you define it, later on you cannot change it. Always add the highest priority meaning maximum combinations that is allowed must be ticked. You have to strictly tick these three. Debit credit we don't take it because debit credit will go to same G L account. If you want debit different G L account, credit different G L account, then only tick debit credit. If you don't tick, debit credit both will go to same G L. If you tick debit credit, debit can be a different G L account, credit can be a different G L account. This normally we don't tick for G R I R account. Save this setting. Now when you are saving this setting, it is telling the current account determination will be deleted if rules are changed. Meaning, is this something that you can change again and again or it is one time you have to maintain?
One time.
This is strictly one time you need to maintain because if you change it, whatever account determination that is maintained under W R X will be straight away deleted. System is clearly telling it will be deleted. So make sure you will not play with it in your project. If you know or if you do not know, it is okay but ensure you apply it twice your mind, what I am doing is right or wrong. Just like that, don't come to the screen, don't change it, don't save it, everything will be deleted. You will be under immense pressure where nobody can help you. Okay, don't do this kind of experiments especially when you are in the project. Even when you are practicing, don't make certain experiment. And this is one of the point where you should not even think about it, testing it, checking it, experimenting, let me see what will happen, don't even do it. Strictly one-time setting and in lifetime of S A P, it will never be changed. Now click on yes. Continue, your rule must be this, if you look at the rule for G R I R, it has to be the same thing and tomorrow when somebody is asking, blindly tell these three points. General modification, valuation modification, valuation class, these points practically we will understand while creating material purchase order. Okay, this will have the impact, this you will be able to understand while creating a material purchase order at this moment, blindly remember these three ticks you must be enabling for G R I R clearing account. Save the rule and after that, go to posting key, same logic that you applied for tax account determination O B forty. Point number one, rule, point number two, posting key. G R I R posting key is what?
Eighty six ninety six. Fifty seven and right six, debit.
Okay, now. Rule, point number one is rule, point number two is posting key. Eighty six and ninety six I am not writing. Debit credit you need to understand whenever two posting keys are given, lower number is a debit, higher number is credit. Eighty six is a debit, ninety six is a credit. In your interview, you will be questioned what posting key will be used for G R I R account. They understood, you know entire F I M M account determination, I am happy with that but I also want to know whether you know if posting key is forty fifty or anything else. Is this forty fifty for G R I R?
No.
This is not forty fifty, it is eighty six ninety six, you have to remember it. And this will not be used manually, this is automatically taken by the system. Now in the rule, what we have taken, this is already defined, just to save it and if you go back to rule, you have taken these three points. General modification. What is the next one? Valuation modification, valuation class. Valuation. Modifier.
Volume.
Valuation class. You are not able to hear me?
Yes, we are hearing.
Is there any difference between general modifier and account modifier sir? Valuation.
As I said, this we will be able to understand for material, these are not relevant for asset. And when we create the material purchase order, then I will explain this, what are this? At this moment, this is what we need to tick blindly. Okay?
Okay.
These are relevant for material P O. Currently, we have, we have not created material P O yet, we are on the asset P O. Since this rule is one-time setting, we need to take highest priority considering every scenario. And according to that, these three must be ticked. And posting key eighty six ninety six and after this you go to account. Save, yes, sorry. I have to tick this also.
General modification.
Save this, go to account. Now in our example, for fixed asset, is valuation modifier applicable, not applicable, leave it blank. General modifier applicable, not applicable, leave it blank. Valuation class, not applicable, leave it blank. Simply put the G L account here. Is this clear? If it is not applicable, just leave it blank. For asset, these are all not relevant, reason, these are relevant only for what? Material. Only for material P O, these are relevant, is your P O material currently?
Asset.
Asset P O, it's a non-material P O, these are not relevant, leave it blank, that's it. Proceed to save. Okay, now let me put this screenshot so that when you create it, you will have a clarity. This is how you create it. This is how you put G L account here. Did I save it? Yes, changes are made. If I come out from this screen, now this error whatever we were getting, we were able to fix it, account determination for A P nine W R X. System is clearly telling G L account is missing with the combination A P nine zero W R X only. Am I correct? Now if you look at your screenshot, you have given only with these two combinations. This is nowhere mentioned in your error. This is nowhere mentioned in your error. This is also nowhere mentioned in your, in your error. If you look at the error message, am I right?
Yes, sir. Yes sir. Yes.
This is not mentioned because for asset P O these are not relevant. If it is relevant, it will include these points next to this in the error message itself. And they will be applicable for material, not for asset. Now whatever the error message we got, according to this scenario, we updated the account determination. Come back. Now G L account determination is maintained, let us try to simulate one more time. Click on simulate one more time. Let's see what will happen. If I simulate one more time, are you getting the accounting entry simulation debit credit both?
Yes.
Alright, debit credit both you are getting, what accounting entry it is giving? If I take another snipping tool of this. Now if I put, let's say, Myro invoice simulation for asset P O. This is what you got? Now if you recollect the asset procurement, asset acquisition with F dash ninety. You got both accounting views, valuation view plus, what is other view?
Operation.
Operational. Operational view, wherever vendor account is used, it is valuation view or operational view?
Operational.
Operational view, in this simulation, are you able to see asset account or vendor account?
Vendor account. Asset account.
Asset account or vendor account?
Vendor account.
Vendor account.
Vendor account. Asset account is different, asserted technical clearing account is different. Okay, now this is asset account, are you getting G R I R clearing account anywhere?
No.
No. But system gave the error for G R I R account missing?
Yes.
Reason, it is a standard validation, standard control in the program. System will allow you to move forward only if O B Y C W R X is maintained in Myro screen. If O B Y C W R X is not maintained, can you record any invoice or it is not possible?
Not possible.
It is not possible, these are called as system controls or system validations, standard system validation. Okay, now G R I R account is not coming, reason, your G R is non-valuated, it is not applicable in this scenario. Come back to the entry. Now you will see, this is simulate in which currency?
I N R, capital currency.
Local currency.
You can see on the top, simulate document in I N R, in bracket what is mentioned?
Document currency.
Document currency, look at the bottom right side, there is something called display currency. Right, now I can display this in dollar also, if I select a dollar. It is now updated to dollar, tomorrow somebody might ask, how do you simulate or can you simulate Myro entry in other currency? Answer is yes or no?
Yes.
You can simulate it, usually certain people what they will tell in the interview, if we ask these kind of questions. Can you simulate Myro invoice in group currency? They will tell yes, if we ask a cross question, can you tell me how you will simulate it? They will tell I do not know, I forgot, I am not sure. Is that acceptable or not acceptable?
Not acceptable.
Not acceptable, certain, certain basic points you need to ensure, you are not making any mistake. Don't just focus on posting the entry, focus on what parameters you need to understand. If you are understanding these points, even if you are not practicing, it is okay, as long as you are understanding these key points. With which automatically you will be able to do it things with confidence wherever you are tomorrow, even in your project. After getting the job. Okay, this is okay, now I will go back, you can directly post from here, but I am not posting from here. Either I can go back or I can close the window, anything is okay. Now you need to make sure after simulating when you come back, this should be green. Balance is zero, it is a green, this is green light here for balance.
Yes.
And the other one, message should not be red. Yellow is okay because it is a warning message, ignore the warning message, as usual, it must be not green, sorry, not red. Now both are okay?
Okay.
Alright, this is green which is okay, this is yellow, this is okay, there is error message. And now let us click on post this accounting entry, let me click on post. Let's see. But I will explain once the entry is posted, then these questions are automatically rectified. Whatever you are going to get, when I explain further, your questions are automatically rectified. Okay? Now the entry is posted, if you look at the accounting entry, what is the document number, starting two digits?
Fifty one.
Fifty one.
Starting two digits of your document number is fifty one, blindly remember. Two things. G R. Document number. Starts from and. I R document number starts from, currently what we posted, G R or I R?
I R.
I R.
What we posted now, G R or I R?
I R.
I R. I R. In. Right, you should not have these kind of confusions. What we posted now is I R, I R is referring to invoice receipt. Don't expect the other person will always ask full forms, invoice receipt, Myro and all, somebody might ask what is L I V posting? L I V posting means logistics invoice verification, am I right? People might be using different, different terminology, make sure based on the scenario, based on the context. You are able to understand and then respond accordingly. Don't blindly go with the definitions, don't blindly go with full forms. Understand the concept accordingly respond. Now here it is fifty one series, fifty one star. And here it is what, fifty?
Fifty.
These are universal number ranges followed in every project across the globe. Tomorrow somebody might ask, how do you identify G R N document and then how do you identify I R document? Blindly tell five zero series for G R N document, five one series for invoice document, commonly followed in every project. Somebody might ask what number range is maintained for G R N document? If I tell I do not know, having said I have four years of experience, is it okay?
Not okay.
I will tell I have four years of experience, five year of experience, then I will tell, I don't know what is the number range for G R N. I do not know what is the number range for invoice. Not okay, right? For sure these are not okay, make sure these kind of mistakes we are not making. Okay, five zero five one. Let me put this in a box. And this is something important. Now entry is posted, now as per our understanding. Whenever you post any accounting or whenever you post any entry on the purchase order. It must be updated in the P O purchase order history or not?
Yes, alright.
Now what I will do, I will go to purchase order. Currently in the purchase order, there is only W E. There is only W E which is referring to goods receipt, do you find five one series document number?
No.
Sorry, five zero. Is there five zero or is there any other number?
Material.
Three zero, so this.
There is no five zero, meaning it is not creating any accounting entry, am I right? There is no value, right?
Yes.
If G R contains, if G R produces the accounting entry, your material document number will begin from five zero. If it did not, it is the material document number which is applicable only in M M, not in F I. Now if I refresh the purchase order, how I will refresh the purchase order? Simply go to this one, other purchase order, keep your purchase order number, press enter one more time. Now you see it is refreshed.
Yes.
Alright, now if you look at invoice receipt number, it is five one zero?
Yes.
This is five one zero.
Yes.
Now we need to make sure what accounting entry it posted, point number one, this one. What is this accounting entry number? Copy this, now I will, I will put. Logistics. Invoice. Document number is this, is this right? Now how do you display this, I will copy this document number, if you wanted to display, in general, how do you display the document?
F B zero three.
F B zero three.
Let's go to F B zero three, put this document number, company code, year twenty twenty five, press enter. Is this coming or not coming?
Not coming.
Not coming, tomorrow somebody will ask you, how do you display Myro document? Is this F B zero three?
No.
This is not F B zero three. Okay, now we will have to understand, display. Logistics. Invoice document. T code is what?
M I R O.
M I?
R four.
R four, put M I R four. Display invoice document, invoice document number this, year twenty twenty five, press enter. Okay, now this is the logistics invoice document number, M M document number or F I document number?
M M.
M M document number, based on the M M document number, follow-on document will be created, meaning this is the first document number. Based on this, follow-on document meaning subsequently document will be generated, that is your accounting. Do you find follow-on document here?
Yes.
Click on follow-on document. When you click on follow-on document, let's see what is generated here. And you have seen these accounting documents, how many documents are generated?
Four.
Four, now we need to ensure what are these document? Tomorrow somebody might ask, whenever you capitalize asset from purchase order, how many documents will be generated, how many are here?
Four.
Four.
Four, right? First one, double click on this, accounting document zero L, accounting document A P ninety. Now there are two document numbers, ledger specific?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Copy this, come here.
For asset sequencing why W R X is assigned anywhere, we are not found that G R I R clearing account in the transaction?
That is, as I said, it is a standard validation in the system, without that it will not allow you to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, that is a standard control point, now we are posting this accounting entry without configuring a complete M M integration, am I right? Whatever you are doing is called as a testing, agree?
Yes.
We will do the testing after completing the configuration completely or partially? When you will do the testing in a project completely, now did we complete the complete F I M M integration setting in O B Y C, not yet, right? We are going based on this scenario, currently we are on asset scenario, according to asset you are doing it. Now after this, when you come to material, you will do material relevant. After that, whatever testing you will do, you will not get these error messages, am I right?
Yes sir.
Alright, now this is ledger specific, let us highlight this. This is also ledger specific, am I right?
Yes.
And this is not ledger specific? Now wherever you get ledger specific, is this valuation view or operational view?
Valuation view.
Valuation view, this is also valuation view, am I correct?
Yes.
Valuation view means what would have happened, system would have entered the document in asset accounting for fixed asset?
Yes.
And this is your operational? Is this right or wrong? As per your previous asset accounting, asset capitalization, F dash ninety, understanding? There is nothing new here, whatever you did, it is the same thing, but it is coming from a different screen. And make sure these confusions you should not get it. And this is what you need to observe while practicing and this is what you need to remember. So that when you are talking to somebody, when you are in a project, it is easy for you to understand what is happening. What entries are coming and how you need to understand, how you need to explain to the user. If as a consultant, we are only getting confused, we will not be able to talk confidently to the user or to your interviewer also. Now this is our understanding because in your S A P S for Hana asset accounting, every ledger is a real-time posting? Am I right?
Yes.
Every ledger is a real-time posting, accordingly ledger wise, asset is debited. Now as per our understanding, document number one zero one ending with eighteen must debit only to the asset, no vendor is involved here?
Yes.
Is that the correct understanding? Is that the correct guessing? Let's go to this. It's not about how many G R Ns you are posting, how many P Os you are creating, how many invoices you are posting, it is about how you are understanding this. It is okay if you post one entry, it is okay if you don't post any entry, it is okay even if you post hundred entries. But it is not okay if you don't understand these points. Select the first accounting document.
There are two, five point series are there now, sir, what are those documents?
We will open each one now, all these four we will open and then see, okay? Now look at the first one, double click on it, this is ledger specific document, what is this accounting entry debit credit?
Fix is a debit, asset technical credit.
Asset record account debit, asset record account debit, credit to the technical clearing.
In short, this is which view, valuation or operational?
Values.
Valuation view because it is ledger specific document, reason there is a ledger group and there is no vendor here?
Yes.
Alright, this is ledger specific, asset is capitalized in which ledger? Which accounting principle, I F R S accounting principle, leading ledger? This is right?
Yes sir.
Come back. And then you have one more valuation view, right, where is the other valuation view document?
Indian bank.
Which is the series?
Sixty nine series.
Sixty.
Sixty nine series. Double click on this.
This is number, this number in series, we are configured for the asset number range, right, so that is the number in series, right?
No, this number range is configured for ledger specific posting. For non-leading.
Yeah, and then only we give all types of document types there, right?
Correct, correct, from there it is coming, you are right. Okay, now this is also valuation view or it is operational view?
Valuation.
Valuation.
This is valuation view for which valuation, I F R S or Indian accounting?
I A S.
Indian accounting.
I A S, Indian accounting, if you look at ledger group, it is A P nine zero, in A P nine zero, we included how many ledgers?
Two ledgers.
One is leading ledger, non-leading ledger or non-leading ledger, representative ledger?
Representative.
We included non-leading ledger plus representative ledger, reason in asset accounting. We included non-leading ledger plus representative ledger. Reason, in asset accounting S for Hana, only one fiscal year is allowed?
Yes.
Since our company code is using two different fiscal year, we had to create another ledger called as representative. Include representative, non-leading, make a ledger group, that is what is referring to here. Am I right? Valuation view is clear for this?
Clear.
Alright, now I will come back. These two documents are clear where there is a ledger group. These are straightforward valuation view for asset accounting debit into the respective accounting principle. Now, let us open the other one, five one series, all zeros one. This is referring to accounting document without any ledger. As per our understanding, this must be which view?
Operational.
Operational view. In operational view, what account will be updated? Vendor or asset?
Vendor.
Vendor. Double-click on this. If you double-click on this, you can see the Pepsi Limited is debited, sorry, credited here. Am I right? This is your operational view. There is no ledger, meaning this vendor account is credited. In short, liability is booked in both leading and non-leading ledger commonly?
Yes.
At asset, capitalization is booked separately in leading, separately in non-leading, but vendor liability is commonly booked. Is this right or wrong?
Right.
Is this correct? Vendor is booked commonly in both ledgers. Asset is booked separately in each ledger. Is that what the understanding from this posting?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright, and then come back. You will have to understand these points because tomorrow, your interviewer wants you to explain these points without any confusion, without any second thought. No doubtfulness, don't lose your confidence, talk confidently, this is what is happening. For that, at least one time do the practice, note down the points, understand in a logical manner.
Ajay, it is similar to that, I document similar, similar and similar G L A, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Sir, sir, in the valuation view, sir, can you show that as G L view, sir, the document in a G L view, can you put some light on this?
If you go to this general ledger view, you will get the same thing, where you will see the profit center, otherwise, nothing else. You will see the profit center. You go to entry view, you may not be able to see profit center both levels, but when you put this, profit center will come at both level. That's the only point.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Come back and then let us open the fourth one. First three documents are clear.
Yes, sir.
Now, if you look at the fourth one and if you look at what you are able to see here are the same, five one nine twenty one, five one nine twenty one?
Yes.
Three are from F I, one is from material M M. Is that the right approach? Right understanding?
Yes.
Fourth one is M M document number. First three are F I document numbers. If I double-click on this. Now, I double-click on fourth one, let's see what we will see. You can see this. And this entry is showing how many line items?
One.
Only one. Okay, this is your, what document?
Document.
Asset accounting document. Asset accounting document, you can see on the top, overview of what? Asset accounting document? Yes, no?
Yes.
Now, come down here.
Here the screen is showing as M I R four.
Because you came, you are on M I R O, M I R four screen, that is what it is referring. This screen is different. Okay, now write down.
Ajay, how first, how first three are F I document, Ajay? Five one series belongs to M M document posting now?
The other one is updated by the M M consultant, the fourth one. This is updated by the M M consultant, common for all purchase orders, whatever is related to your P O type. Based on the purchase order, the subsequent mapping number range is created by M M consultant. This number is not created by us, it is created by M M. And the remaining three are created by us. Okay?
Even the, even the number in series for five one is created by us, Ajay?
These three are created by us, what I am highlighting.
Okay.
This one is created by M M consultant, we don't do it. This is not in our scope. This is created by M M. This is triggering these three document. This is the source. These are the targeted document. In short, follow-on or subsequent document. Okay?
But six nine series, we have not, like, we have not defined anywhere, Nelson.
Which one?
Six nine series.
You have defined for non-leading ledger?
Yes.
We have defined it. When we created a non-leading ledger, we defined it. Yes or no?
Yes, sir.
We have defined it. Now, T codes for display document. First one. Accounting document. Second one. M M document or M M. Invoice document. Third one is asset document. These are the three documents that you are able to see here.
Yes.
Accounting document to display T code.
F B zero three.
F B zero three. M M document to display screen.
M I R four.
B twenty three.
M I R four. Asset document. It is your A B zero three. Asset is what?
A B zero.
A B zero three. Now, this one you understood how to see, this one you understood how to see, this is what we have not yet seen, am I correct?
Yes.
This everybody is aware, F B zero three, M I R four is what we are able to see now? Is this correct? This is here, M I R four. Understood now how to see the invoice document? Now, the last one is what? A B zero three. If you go to A B zero three, it is referring to documents for asset. Here, you cannot put a document number, you have to put asset number. Give your company code and then give the asset which you capitalized, press enter for the fiscal year. When you press enter, it will display the document. Is this the same screen that you got when you clicked on the fourth option, fourth document?
Same document.
Right? These are the documents that are posted from the asset accounting. This is how you display. And if you select this, if you click on accounting document, you will be able to see this. Accounting entry. How the asset is capitalized? And this is bringing a zero L because on this screen, A B zero three, I have given. Sorry, we have not given anything. By default, it is taking which area if I don't give anything?
Zero one.
Zero one?
Oh, yes.
Right? If I put, for example, zero three. Now, it is changed to this. If I click on the accounting entry, now it is updated to this. Understood how system is working? Clear or not? Right? If you don't give anything, it is taking what? Which area? Area number one, leading ledger. If you want any specific depreciation area, give the appropriate depreciation area, otherwise, it will take some other number. Sorry, otherwise, it will take leading ledger zero one. If you want any specific, put appropriate depreciation area. Come back and these are the accounting entries that system generated for this. And these four accounting documents, you are clear now. When you create a purchase order with P O for fixed asset capitalization, now let us look at this fixed asset capitalization. Now, next one, let us write down. This will put in a different table. And let's write down. Display asset values. T code is what?
A W zero.
A W zero one N. Now, let us go to A W zero one N. If you go to A W zero one N, enter. And here, you need to put company code followed by asset number, press enter. And you see that amount is twenty five thousand. Okay, and on the left-hand side, you see objects related to asset. It is clearly representing purchase order number also here. It is giving you, this asset is purchased from this vendor. This is related to this cost center. Purchase order date is this, purchase order number is this, G L account is this, and then profit center is this. Key data, you are able to identify or not on one go? Right? And it is capitalized on what date?
Thirty first May.
Thirty first.
Thirty first.
Thirty first May.
Thirty first May twenty twenty five. But I booked the invoice on what date? Today's date, right?
Yes. Yes.
Now, let me go to this invoice. I will go to invoice document and then I will click on display. It will take me to M I R four. Put this invoice document. My invoice is booked on thirteen zero six, thirteen zero six. And my purchase order date is thirty zero five, but capitalization date is different. Now, look at this accounting entry on the line item. If you scroll right side, you will find a date here. You find something called asset value date?
Yes.
Right? And in this asset value date, any date is mentioned or nothing is mentioned?
It's empty.
It is empty, right?
Yes.
This is empty. Now, if I wanted to display the purchase order from here, I can double-click on this because there is a hyperlink, underline. Or if P O is already displayed, come to here. On this, I have seen or I see that thirty one is my G R N date? Right? By default, the system is taking a G R N date as asset capitalization date. Am I right or not? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If you don't want this date, if you want a different date, what you need to do is, at the time of booking the entry, this is editable. Now, we already booked. At the time of booking this invoice, this is editable, you have to come to this line item. Scroll right side, you will find asset value date. You will find asset value date. Whatever the date you put here, on this date, asset will be capitalized. If you don't put anything, what system will take? G R N date?
G R N date.
Okay, now we will try to see what will happen if my value date is different. Now, can you edit the value date?
No.
Now, what I will do to do it, I have to go to change asset. Select the asset number. Now, before that, go to posted value. Look at the depreciation value. And you know how to validate the number, right? Depreciation value? Everybody is aware of the calculation logic, right? Per annum depreciation, per month depreciation, per day depreciation, based on the asset capitalization date, for the financial year, what should be the depreciation? What depreciation system is bringing, you need to validate, cross-verify and ensure number is correct, your calculation is also correct. This is one point. Second point, let us go to A S zero two, change asset. Put this asset, enter. And if you scroll down, there is a capitalization date and there is a acquisition date. Now, are we able to modify the capitalization date here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We are able to modify this. Now, if you look at your depreciation configuration, we told the system depreciation to be calculated from capitalization date or ordinary depreciation start date. In our asset accounting configuration, we told the system, please charge depreciation from depreciation start date onward, not from capitalization date. Now, you are not supposed to allow users to edit or change capitalization date. If I don't want this, I need to keep it enabled or disabled. In short, change mode or display mode, this particular field.
Display mode.
It must be display mode. Anything to be changed, it must be part of your field status. Asset field status is based on what? Screen layout rule for the asset. Now, currently, this is editable, okay? Now, this is the asset class A P nine zero M C. Let's go to asset accounting config. T code for asset accounting config?
O R F A.
Go to O R F A. Now, what is our target to disable that particular field from the changes? Value date? It is coming from the master data. In this configuration, go to master data, screen layout. Screen layout for asset master, open this. This is something which we defined, which we assigned in the asset class. Is this correct? If you recollect how asset class is created, asset class is created with the three prerequisite. Screen layout rule and then?
Account determination.
Account determination and then? Right. Now, let's see what we created here. Something A P we would have created, A P nine zero motor car. Select this layout, double-click on logical field group. And you look at where is this currently? Select general data first, click on field group rule. Check, do you find that particular field here?
No.
Not there, right? Go back. And go to posting information, select posting information, double-click on field group rule. Do you find that capitalization date?
Yes.
This is currently optional and you need to make it editable or non-editable? Non-editable, meaning we will have to put display. Keep this on the display mode, click on save. This is a config. Click on yes. Come back. Okay? And let me go to asset change screen one more time. I will go to A S zero two one more time, change the asset one more time. Scroll down. Now, can you change the capitalization date?
No.
Now, this is not possible. You should not allow these changes to be made by the user. Because this will give a wrong representation if user is able to change it. Because you are not doing anything on the capitalization date. Reason, your depreciation is based on this date? Right? This you can change it, it is okay. But this capitalization, you are not supposed to change it. At the time of invoice booking, only you update it. From there, it will update here and then later on, it is not possible for you to change. If you want this to be changed, ask your user to cancel the invoice, rebook the invoice. What user has to do?
The invoice.
Cancel the invoice and then rebook the invoice. Now, let us try to understand how do you cancel the asset capitalization? Now, this entry is booked, right? P O invoice is booked. And this is the P O invoice document number, this one? Now, let us try to understand a document reversals. Accounting document reversal, T code?
A B zero eight. A B zero eight.
F B zero eight, okay? And P O invoice document reversal?
M R eight. M R eight.
M R?
MR eight.
Alright. Now, asset document reversal?
ABC right.
ABC, these three again you need to understand, tomorrow somebody might ask. How do you reverse these documents? And we cannot tell I do not know. You cannot say I don't know. Strictly not allowed. Now, if. I wanted to reverse it. Now, these all documents. Are derived documents or original documents?
Derived documents.
This one is a derived document because it is not. A independent document, right, this is derived based on the purchase order invoice document which is this. Am I right?
Yes.
This is the. Base document. This is the base document, the above three are derived document, is my statement correct?
Yes.
So, if you want to reverse it, which entry I need to reverse, first three or the last one?
Last one.
Last.
You have to reverse the last one. Now, let me select the last one. Now, as per our understanding, this is your MM invoice document number, is there any material in it?
No.
There is no material in it, let me copy it. If. It is a material document or if it is a. Or in short, if assuming this is the. Material purchase order, purchase order invoice number or PO document number, what is the T code for invoice reversal? From MM point of view? MR eight M, let us go to. MR eight M. If I go to this. If I put invoice number, fiscal year reversal reason zero one, I'll put. Today's date only as reversal date, if I press enter. If I click on display document, in short, display the original document, this is not reversal simulation, this is your original documented display. Click on this. It is giving this information, is this what you are trying to reverse?
Yes.
Correct? This is not simulation, don't get confused. This is the original documented display, not simulate reversal document, you cannot simulate reversal document. Come back. Click on reverse. Let's see whether this will be reversed or not. Document is reversed or not?
Reverse.
Yes.
Document is reversed, it is telling you please manually clear FI document, okay? Now, what we did, we reversed invoice, right? Now, this entry is based on the purchase order or it is independent entry?
Based on the purchase order.
Based on the purchase order, now let us come to purchase order first. If it is reversed, in the purchase order history also, reversal data must be updated or not? Now, according to the current situation, invoice is booked or invoice is not yet booked?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet booked, because you booked, you canceled it, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Whatever we booked, we canceled it, if I try to refresh the purchase order. Put the same purchase order, press enter. Now, is this zero currently? This is entered, this is entered. Reversed, plus and minus you can see here?
Yes.
Alright, quantity is zero, invoice booked, quantity is zero, because earlier it was one, now there is a negative one, it has become zero. Purchase order side, it is clear reversal impact? Am I right? Purchase order point of view, reversal is successful, it is all clear. Now, let us go to asset. If I go to asset, asset also should become zero or not?
Yes, zero.
Asset also it should become zero, let me go to asset, where do I check the asset?
Asset.
Asset. Asset.
AW zero.
AW zero one N.
AW zero one N. Because to see the impact, you need to see the asset value, right? Earlier asset value was twenty five thousand, now asset value must be fifty thousand, twenty five thousand or it should be zero?
Zero.
It should be zero. Enter. Is this zero?
Yes, sir, zero.
Okay, now look at the T type there. T type is referring to transaction type. If asset is purchased, transaction type is hundred, if asset is reversed, it is what, one zero five?
Yes, sir.
If asset is purchased, T type is hundred, this is what you are updating manually also F dash ninety, am I right? Okay, now this is one zero five, asset is zero, reversal is successful or not?
Sir, one question, sir, one question here. So, if we will run that depreciation, shall we reverse asset, shall we reset MM dot?
You can reverse it, even after running the depreciation, this can be reversed. Once it is reversed, when you run the depreciation one more time, it will be auto adjusted. The next depreciation run will reverse the previously posted depreciation if any adjustment done to the asset. Or you can redo the depreciation in Esparhana system, multiple times you can run the depreciation. Okay? Once we run the depreciation, I will make you understand these points practically. Okay? Now, in this example, what is the right T code to reverse the transaction, to reverse the invoice, to reverse the asset?
MR eight.
MR eight. And this will be used in case the asset is purchased without purchase order. If asset is purchased with purchase order, you must cancel this MR eight. Originally invoice? Am I right? If asset is directly purchased, then you'll have to go to AB zero eight. Sorry, FB zero eight. You need to understand which entry is triggering my asset accounting, that original entry is what you'll have to reverse. Not the derived entry, not the subsequent, not the follow on accounting entry. Now, come back to this asset accounting. Now, currently it is blank, now we have to rebook the invoice, am I right?
Yes.
Now, for me to rebook the invoice, what I need to do? I have to come to M I R O one more time. When I come to M I R O one more time. Observe carefully here. Twenty five thousand. Business place. Purchase order number. Now, straight away there is no message, but if you observe carefully. Am I entering this same reference, same details one more time or not?
Yes, sir.
In short, the previous entry is already booked, now I'm already again booking the entry?
Yes.
Now, is this the duplicate data that I'm entering or not? Okay, now you need to make sure one vendor invoice cannot be entered twice. Agree? Vendor invoice number, where are you updating?
Reference.
Reference.
Reference column, there is already one entry posted with this reference number.
Yes.
Which is canceled, now if I put the same number again, is this a duplicate record or not? Forget about whether you reversed or not. According to you, technically it's a duplicate or not?
Yes.
It should be allowed or it should not be allowed?
It should not be allowed.
But is this allowing or not? Currently, it's all good to go, no red light. Right, now you need to make sure, how do you prevent duplicate invoice? How do you prevent duplicate invoice, there are two levels, level one is accounting invoice document number. Level two, logistics invoice document number, this is accounting invoice document or logistics invoice document? Accounting or logistics? Accounting is where there is no purchase order, logistics is where there is a purchase order, what is this now?
Purchase order.
This is with purchase order, meaning it is a logistics invoice number, understand the difference between logistics invoice number, accounting invoice number. Accounting invoice is referring to F dash forty three FB sixty, where there is no connection to MM, where there is no connection to PO. Logistics, the moment you are bringing the terminology, it is referring to MM model purchase order. Now, we understood there are two level of invoice duplication control, level number one at. FI level. FI side, you'll have to look at the vendor number, what is the vendor number?
Pepsi Limited, one nine double zero one.
One nine double zero double one, this vendor, where do I check? Where do I display the vendor?
BP. BP.
BP, go to BP. Click on this one, open BP. Control V, what is that, one nine zero zero one?
One nine double zero double one.
One nine double zero double one, now you are looking at BP which role?
General role.
You want to look at what?
Precision. Precision.
Just organization, sir.
You want to look at what? Vendor, right?
Vendor.
Vendor at FI level is what I said, FI level vendor is which role?
FLV N double zero.
Which role?
FLV N double zero.
Right, you'll have to understand all these points, it is not okay if you forget this. Enter. Okay, and then go to company code. Pick your company code. And if you pick your company code, go to vendor account management. Scroll down, check if you find anywhere duplicate invoice here. Do you find anywhere in the duplicate invoice? Under vendor account management?
No.
No. Then go to the vendor payment transaction. Do you find any duplicate control checkbox? There is something here? Check double invoice. Double invoice is nothing but duplicate invoice, is this enabled or disabled?
Disabled.
This is enabled, this is available in which role? FLV N double zero, is this role connected to M I R O screen?
No.
No, sir.
No.
Right? M I R O screen is connected to FLV N zero one role. Purchasing. Am I correct?
Yes.
Here, if you enable it, if I go to. Change. If I tick this. Okay? If I try to save it. Now, I am telling the system from the FI point of view, in short, in F dash forty three screen, in FB sixty screen. Please don't allow the duplicate invoice. Date, amount, vendor, reference number, there is a combination. That we will see separately during the testing, maybe in the subsequent, in the coming sessions. Understand this is the control. This control will allow you to prevent duplicate posting at the time of F dash forty three FB sixty, in short, accounting document invoice, am I right? Now, this is enabled. Now, what I will do, I will try to re-enter the data. Come back just to see. M I R O.
In a, oh MR eight also we can do.
No, currently what I am showing. Is related to accounting only. Okay, that setting is what I am explaining now, the other settings I am not talking at this moment. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Same information I am updating once, one more time, because we enabled the duplicate control or not currently? At vendor master level?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Yes.
Now, still is there any pop up that it is a duplicate? Or no pop up?
No.
No pop up.
There is no pop up, meaning if you update the duplicate control in the vendor master, in M I R O screen, is there any effect or no effect?
No effect.
No effect.
No effect.
No effect. Alright? Now, because this is not coming from the FI side, FI side, it is coming from MM side. For MM side, where do you set the duplicate control? What is the T code? Somebody told just now, right?
Game three.
What asset, Manikandan you told, OM?
OM, OM eight.
This one? Not this one?
No, sir, no, sir. That one is somewhere we do maintain.
Alright, let us go to SPRO. Let us go to SPRO, whatever invoice that you are booking now, is this from FI side or is this from MM side?
MM side.
MM side.
MM side.
Sir, sir.
MM side, not FI side. And these differences is what you have to strictly remember. And it is not okay if you are having any confusion in this, strictly not okay. Am I clear? These confusions will make you feel very uncomfortable when you are in the project. Where other person will simply tell on your face, you do not even know whether it is FI or MM. Having said, three year experience, four year experience, X Y Z year of experience, you cannot make these kind of silly mistakes. These are all blunders, silly mistakes. Understand what is FI, what is MM, from where, what is coming? If this you are not able to understand, our practice is not going to help anywhere. And the effort what I am giving, effort what you are giving is useless. We are all playing with what purchase order? Is this correct or not? We are on this single invoice still, am I correct? Did we book multiple purchase order, did we book multiple invoices or we are on this single invoice?
We are on the single invoice.
Single invoice, it is purely related to purchase order, do not get any kind of a confusions here. I am not creating multiple invoices just to ensure you are not getting confused. Even with the single purchase order, you are getting confused, something is wrong either with me or with you. Pay attention, try to understand clearly without getting any kind of a confusion. Reason, tomorrow if this confusion you are bringing in your project, upfront you will be looking like a fool in the project. Right, the other person will have very bad impression on you, no matter what you do, this impression cannot be removed. We all share that first impression is best impression, once a person gets this kind of opinion, that this candidate is not able to identify what is what. No matter how better you perform, that opinion will not be changed. Okay, this is related to MM not FI. FI is where you post F dash forty three, FI is where you post FB sixty, FI is where there is no purchase order. Is this without purchase order or with purchase order?
With purchase.
With purchase order.
This is with purchase order strictly logistics invoice, strictly MM model invoice. Okay, to put any control on the MM model invoice, MM consultant will look into it, not you. Close this. And come to this. And here you have to. Go to MM side, which means material management, not financial accounting. As a FICO consultant, it is your responsibility to make a configuration where the setting is coming from, financial accounting or controlling. If there is a setting related to material management, upfront you tell the MM consultant, this is part of MM config, this is part of MM node. Any config from MM side will be done by MM consultant, not by you. Am I clear? Because you do not know the impact, you do not know the requirement, you do not know how system is a setup, you do not know if you do it, what will happen? If anything goes wrong, you will be blamed, if nothing is. Wrong, it is okay. Now, here what are you trying to do? What are you trying to book there? Invoice? Under material management, you will find logistics invoice verification, this is what we were referring to logistics invoice?
Yes.
Open this. And you have incoming invoice because invoice is received from vendor, it is coming to you and that is why you call it as incoming invoice. Open this incoming invoice, do you find anywhere duplicate here?
Yes.
Set check for duplicate invoices. Open this. And here you need to make sure. Your company code is available or not available?
Available.
It is available. Currently, is this enabled or disabled? Currently, is this enabled or disabled?
Disabled.
Disabled.
Now you wanted to enable at company code level plus reference level plus invoice date level. And if you wanted to check a credit memo, you can put, but normally we don't test. Keep only these first three. Company code, reference, invoice number. If these three are matching, it will throw a duplicate. Now press enter. Who will do this setting? FI or MM?
MM consultant.
This will be done by MM consultant, not by FI consultant. Now two level duplicate invoice control, one at the vendor master used for FI invoice document without purchase order. F dash forty-three, FB sixty. Second one at this screen which is used for M I R O, which purchase order? Now this is enabled. Let us come back to this. M I R O one more time. Same date, same this one. What date was mentioned there? Invoice date or posting date?
Invoice date.
Invoice date. Okay, if I put enter. Any pop-up currently?
No.
No.
No. I will put the amount. I will put this. I will put the purchase order number. Now any pop-up?
No.
No pop-up.
No pop-up. Okay, press enter. Simulate it. Come back. Any error?
No.
No error. Let me try to save it. But before saving it, we understood, there is a date here, right?
Sir.
Sir.
Okay, now I, hold on. I will put this date as tenth. I am taking a different date altogether here.
Yes.
I am taking ten here. Tenth is the state. And click on simulate. Yes, what was your question?
There is that, that error message also, that also we need to, hmm, we need to maintain, sir, in O B F I, that application area.
We will see this because we are still on the first scenario of purchase order. We already enabled this now. We are not getting any message here, am I right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Now whatever config we did, we will come back to this with different, different examples. To this, I will come back with the different other examples for both FI level and, and with MM level. Currently, even after maintaining this setting, are you getting any duplicate pop-up?
No.
Sir.
No.
No.
Technically, is this a duplicate now from your point of view?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a duplicate? You already reversed, right? You are again rebooking it. Is this a duplicate?
Yes. No, sir. It's already reversed.
No.
It is reversed. You booked, you reversed it, meaning according to you invoice is not booked, you are now again rebooking the invoice, which is reversed. From your point of view, is this a duplicate or not a duplicate?
Not a duplicate.
Duplicate.
It's not a duplicate.
Not a duplicate. If it is a duplicate, your asset must be already capitalized? If it is a duplicate, asset must be already updated with twenty-five thousand. Is there any value in the asset?
No.
No.
If there is already twenty-five thousand sitting in the asset, then I can say or we can say it is a duplicate. There is nothing because you already reversed it. From your point of view, is this a duplicate or not?
Not duplicate.
Not a duplicate. You are not getting error message. According to this scenario, is this okay if you are not getting the error message?
Yes.
This is okay. This is okay. I am not explaining further points related to it, why we are not getting a duplicate. We will come to a situation where it is a duplicate from our point of view, then we will see whether you are receiving the message or not. If you are not receiving, then we will understand why it is not coming, what else we need to do. Currently, we know that it is a valid case, right? Not a duplicate?
Yes.
System is not stopping, meaning as per our scenario, it is okay now?
Yes.
When it is okay as per our scenario, let us not get into unnecessary points where you will be unwantedly confused. Let us not do it. Setting is enabled, this is not a duplicate, you are not getting stuck anywhere, it is fine. Click on. Post. Invoice is booked. I am not displaying the document because you understood, it will generate the different documents, right? Value issue, accounting view.
Yes.
Come back to asset explorer, give the asset number, press enter. Click on this, refresh asset. Asset is capitalized again?
Yes.
Yes.
Now asset is capitalized, twenty-five thousand is appearing. What is the value date now?
Ten two.
Ten, June ten.
If you update manually, it is taking from the invoice screen. If you leave it blank, it is taking from the GR screen. Specifically, you will be questioned on this value date, how value date will be updated when you book the asset capitalization through purchase order? Understood how it is getting updated?
Yes.
Right? Now let us look at two points here. Go to display asset master from the asset explorer itself. If you come up, you will find an option called display master data. Click on this display master data. Scroll down. What is the capitalization date?
Thirty-first May.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first May twenty twenty-five. What is the depreciation started?
Thirty-first May.
Thirty-first May twenty twenty-five.
Thirty-first May twenty twenty-five. Now if you look at the transaction. What dates are here? This is nine twenty-two. Or nine twenty-three, not nine twenty-two, it must be. Nine twenty-three. Okay, in this, what date did we mention?
Ten six twenty-two.
Ten. Well, ten six twenty.
Ten six. But in the asset, is this date updated or not updated?
Not updated, sir.
Why not updated? You need to understand. These dates are updated when you first capitalize the asset. When it will be updated, when you first capitalize the asset. Now the first entry in this asset. Is this or the something else? Is this the first entry?
This is sorry.
Is this the first entry or not?
No.
This is not the first entry. These dates are updated only when you record the first accounting entry in the asset. Is this the first accounting entry or not? In the asset, is this the first transaction or not first transaction?
Not.
First transaction.
Not first.
It is not, right? If you see the sequence.
Not first.
It will update in the sequence.
Not first.
It is not the first. These dates are updated strictly from the first transaction posted to the asset. Am I clear? Why it is still thirty-one, understood or not?
Sir, because we, sir, because we have selected while creation of deposition key, they started a deposition, sir.
No, 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 no. I already told the answer. What was my answer? What I told you now? It will update based on first transaction. Is this the first transaction or not the first transaction?
Not the first.
Not the first.
System will update dates from this first transaction. Blindly system will read the first transaction, update the information, that's it. If you want anything, go edit it manually. Understood?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow, your, your, your user might raise a request. Your user might raise a ticket. You're, you'll be questioned in the interview, right? Yes or no? Tell me some tickets. Put this ticket. Tell your user capitalized an asset, they gave wrong with capitalization date, they canceled the entry, they rebooked the invoice, still capitalization date is incorrect. There is a ticket. Now what you will do? What is the solution? Now for this solution, what I want you to do is, now you understood how system behaved? Yes, no? This case, everybody is clear. What is supposed to be the capitalization date? What is the actual capitalization date after the third entry? Expectation and then the actual output. Understood or not for everyone? We wanted a ten-six to be capitalization date, but it is still thirty-one five. This is clear or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Clear, right? Now what I want you to do when you are practicing the purchase order? Create a purchase order while booking the invoice. Don't book straight away. Don't book straight away. Before booking, make sure you change the asset value date, some other date. Put some random date which is different from your GRN date, which is different from your posting date. Am I clear? While booking the invoice for the first time itself, you put a different date. Immediately come back to this and then verify what value date is it updating. Then you will have the two cases. One case is on my screen, another case will be on your screen. Am I correct?
Yes.
One scenario is in front of you now. Other scenario will be? When you practice? Now you will have the answer to the question what, where you are getting confused? No other go, you have to put an effort. Understood, right? What you have to check while posting the invoice? Don't blindly practice. Create the invoice and make sure you are able to do this.
Can you write on the?
No, no, no need to write. When you book the entry, you have to look at this field also. Value date. You fill this value date. With a different date. Other than GRN date, other than this invoice date. And then look at the asset master record, check what dates are updated and where that date is picking from. Is this picking from value date? Is this picking from invoice date, posting date or GRN date? You will be in a position to easily identify because I am telling you to change the date at your first invoice itself.
Sir, sir, one question, sir. When, when we purchasing, sir, from that purchasing, we will give the, the reference date now, sir, from that dates.
It is the same. When you are booking from F dash ninety, the field name is reference date. When you are booking from purchase order, this field name is value date. Both are same.
Okay, sir. Then, then, then we need to change manually. If the asset is, uh, the second or twice, twice purchasing, the system will pick the first purchase asset. We need to edit manually on the asset master, correct, sir?
Right. Okay, understood, right? What you have to do and when you practice it, strictly create only one purchase order. Make sure these points were able to understand. Make sure you are observing these points. And tomorrow when somebody is asking you, ensure you can clearly explain the process. How purchase order is created for an asset, how asset is capitalized without any confusion by taking a practical example and then tell. Preferably you take how it is reversed, what entries are getting posted, GRIR is coming or not coming, if it is not coming, why it is not coming? How many views are coming, valuation view, operational view, compare the entry between F dash ninety posting. Plus M I R O posting. After doing it, because F dash ninety already everybody did, am I right? F dash ninety already everybody did. Now what I want you to do is, when you do this M I R O asset acquisition, do the comparison, take those asset documented numbers. Look at each documented number, what entry is posted. From Miro also you look at what entry is posted, you will be seeing that there is no change, it is the same. The only point is approach is different. And after this, we will try to understand how you will create or how you will purchase the asset with down payment. Now, before this, did we work on down payment or not? Advanced payment to the vendor?
Yes.
Did we create advanced payment or not yet?
Advanced payment not yet, sir.
We have not created advanced payment yet. That special deal what we created was for. Partial payment for invoice for automatic payment program, is that right?
Sir.
Whatever we created was for partial payment for automatic payment program. Now in the next session. Or in the coming sessions, once you practice this asset procurement, we will work on advanced payment in which we will see how normal advance is made. For regular purchases, we will also see how advance is made for the purchase order. Now I am creating a purchase order. Or I am purchasing the asset. Sometimes when you are buying the asset, you may have to make the advanced payment. Take an example, you are purchasing a car for your company. If you wanted to buy a car, in general, nobody will go buy the cars on the spot, right? You will have to make the booking. Yes, no? Yes or no? If I have to buy a car, can I go pay the cash, buy the car immediately if it is a new car?
No, sir, we make advance.
You will have to make the advance, right? Possible or not? Don't take exceptional cases. Some cars I can go buy directly. Don't take these kind of examples. These are not practical, these are exceptional cases. Don't take exceptionals. If you take these exceptionals in the interview, we will be kept as an exception under rejection list. Okay, so if you want to buy any car, you would like to. Pay the advance. Let's assume that you are going to buy an asset or buy a car where the supplier or vendor is asking, please pay ten percent down payment. Please pay ten percent token amount. Okay, now you will have to pay the ten percent amount. And then when you book the invoice, you will have to book with ninety percent amount or ten percent amount or hundred percent amount. This we will have to see how advanced payment works in general in FI and how advanced payment works from purchase order. This we will see in the coming sessions after you practiced this. In short, for you to practice, there are two things. Today is a Saturday, tomorrow is a Sunday. Sorry, today is Friday, right? Today is Friday. So what I want you to do is, practice this asset procurement today. At the same time, whatever the purchase tax that you worked yesterday, same thing you swap it for sales tax. What you will have to do for purchase tax, change it to sales tax and then configure it to make sure when you book the sales invoice for the customer. Sales entry is coming along with the sales tax without any error, without any warning. The way you got purchase tax, in the exact way you will have to bring the sales tax. Try if you are able to do it. If not, tomorrow I will write in the Excel sheet what configuration to be maintained for it. Am I clear? On the assignment, what you have to do? One is your invoice booking, observing all the key points for the purchase order asset capitalization. Second one, creating the sales tax configuration, booking the sales invoice from FI model, F dash twenty-two, FB seventy. Observing how tax is coming, ensuring no warning message, no error message, GL account related to sales tax. GL account related to sales must be updated with relevant tax categories. Don't blindly put start everywhere. Ensure the appropriate column is selected and you are in a position to test it properly. And if you are stuck somewhere, if you are not able to get it, which we will discuss in the tomorrow's session after the class. All right? Let me stop the recording now.